We'll start with accentuate the positive.
Good thing I was listening. Um, welcome Orchard Hill, Brandon Hammond, Principal. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to, we had a bingo night, uh, last Friday. Eighty-nine families attended. It, it was just packed. Such a cool event. We earned about $2,300 for the PTO, which awesome. Um, and then I really wanted, because of the time and energy that is put into it, just give some specific thanks. So it's on record. Uh, so I want to thank Kathy Homan, Sarah Nash, Katie McCormick, Louise Lopez, Sarah Ingstrom, Carmen Edwards, Amalia Rodriguez, Ellen Andine, and Emily Zellner-Giesler. And it really is countless hours that went into that. Now, having recently been trained in our family engagement by Sherri, I know that is not the best thing that we can do. So on Monday, last Monday, the sixth, we had Sherri come and do a training on the four corners of the family engagement process, which was awesome. I really liked it. It gave our staff the foundation they needed for the process of why we're doing it. And then on the fourteenth, we have a family night coming in. They are also going to be instructed on the four corners, just to again, lay the foundation, give a little more reason of why we're moving forward with that. That is it. Shana.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. I'm Shana Schleif, Principal at Phoenix Elementary School. Um, this week we celebrated a week of kindness. I want to give a shout out to Sally Connor. She's our hugs person, the child development specialist. And so she helped coordinate that. So we had dress up days and then encouraging things to do each day, like give five compliments of kindness, or check in and say hi and make somebody's day special. Um, today's tie dye day. So that's why I'm wearing my, why I'm wearing my son's tie dye shirt, because I didn't have one. Uh, and then I just want to also say that nothing says peace and kindness like a good lockdown drill. So we had that today. And I want to give a shout out to Officer Hall. Uh, he's our SRO. And he and a team came in today and they did a fantastic job of, of helping us keep our school safe. And he's just an amazing SRO. Uh, want to give a shout out also to our TWI team. We're sending a bunch of people to a training next week called NABE. And we're really excited to be, um, supporting that program. And we are, they've just been working really, really hard this year because they're not implementing one curriculum, but they're implementing two curriculums because of our ELA adoption. Um, so I just want to give that team a shout out. And last but not least, before our next board meeting, we will be having our, um, family fun night with reading to continue our work that we've been doing around alertness, the focus with our families. So that'll be happening on Tuesday, February 28th.
Thanks, Shana. Good evening, Board. Heather Lowe from Talent Elementary. Um, we could probably just say same as most of the time. Um, I do want to give a specific shout out to Sergeant Lehman. This week was our official SRO appreciation week. And so just want to say thanks to him for all of his support, um, in his time with our district. I also want to say a quick thank you to our maintenance team. We had some like safety concerns with our traffic flow and it put in a quick work order and John's crew just quickly came and took care of it. But then also like our grounds are looking really good at Talent. So just want to appreciate those guys. Also really excited to announce that we have a new checkers champion. That's a big deal at Talent. Um, Abram Glickel, who's a third grader at, you know, Mr. And Mrs. Glickelson, he's vicious. We were like, oh my God, be nice. But it was really fun. And then just last but not least, the talent show was awesome. It was really sweet to bring that back. So that's it from TES.
Catherine Holden reporting from Talent Middle School. Um, I just want to say we are super excited in this actual current moment. Uh, we're hosting the eighth grade wrestling championship for our region right now. So I was over there and I ran over here real quick. Uh, but we have 20 schools who are represented, um, at Talent Middle School right now, and they're all wrestling as hard as they can on those mats. Um, and I just want to shout out a huge thank you to the crew that helped put this on. Uh, certainly our athletic director, Derek Rodman, for coordinating the whole event, as well as Monique Strain, Jessica Morga, Stephen McCormick, Chrissy Ann Hawes, Maria Thompson, Chelsea Winner, and the Phoenix High School Girls Basketball Team, who they're running our concession stand right now. And then also our, uh, parent volunteer Rosa Ochoa, who is always showing up for everything and office. And all of our staff really who have made for a calm, comfortable and predictable environment so that learning could be happening this year. And recently, we just brought back, uh, Donut Fridays for our staff. Richard, Rich Hobbins has really, uh, led this up and we've had donuts for the last three Fridays. And I know that's just been a really nice time to have to be together and, um, enjoy each other's company and eat some fresh donuts from Pucks now open.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Quickly, um, we've had five new kindergarten through eighth grade students enroll and three new high school students enroll in this past week. Uh, so, um, we're currently more than double our September student population. So we're happy about that. Um, our elementary grades are getting involved in some science. So we've been working on dry resist watercolor art in Friday's steam class. Next week, they'll be conducting a very serious science experiment regarding the ability of solids to dissolve in liquids at various temperatures over a long time. It's also known as making rock candy. It's going to be very cool. And finally, our students are getting, our students and parents actually are getting excited about our field trip coming up here at the end of the month to wildlife images. We'll report back on how that went after that happens.
Good evening, Board. Sorry, hold on. I just want to add, sorry. Um, are they from our district, the new students, or are they from outside the district?
Uh, there, it's a mix. So we have, uh, one who just moved here from California, actually just moved into the district. We have one who's in Central Point right now that we're bringing in. And then the rest are kids who've come over from the middle school or elementary schools.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, Kailin Cross, proud principal of the Pirate Ship. Um, I'll try to keep this quick, but there's really awesome, a lot of awesome things happening at the high school. A couple of invitations. We wanted to invite you first and foremost to our FFA auction that's happening on Saturday, the twenty, or Sunday, the 26th. Um, at 5:30, Beatriz Rodriguez and Becky Parent, um, our FFA advisor and co-advisor have been working really hard to put that together. So tickets are $15. I heard Peyton Croy is selling some if you wanted to get in on that. Um, we are also having a CTE night on the 22nd at 6:00 PM. Our, all of our CTE teachers, um, and academic advisor, Tammy Ingersen, Celine Fariman, uh, Jesse Holcomb, Brad Jones, Chris Power and David Ford, and a few others, um, have been working really hard to put together just kind of a, an evening where everyone can experience what CTE programs exist on campus, um, and what opportunities exist, um, in our master schedule. So would invite you to come to that. And also a culminating event in June, on June 10th, we will be hosting our graduation ceremony. Um, and we are actually going to host that at 4:00 PM instead of the traditional 6:00 PM. We wanted to let you all know that first. There has been, um, many requests from families to, uh, host that a little bit earlier. And so we are wanting to honor that request. So families have some time to celebrate with their graduates before the grad night event. Um, other really awesome things, we have some EMS, uh, apprenticeship opportunities. We're partnering with Mercy Flights and other, um, schools across the valley to offer some great, um, emergency service apprenticeships for students. So more on that to come. Carolina Campbell and Tammy Ingersen on the forefront of that development. Um, we were also able to take two out of our three school counselors to a hatching results conference in San Diego at the beginning of this week, where we, um, were able to learn a lot about school counseling, MTSS, and how to support all students so that they can engage in the classroom. Um, mostly around college and career readiness, academic support, and social emotional learning. So really excited, um, to come back and actually work, work regionally with some other schools on school counseling work. Um, and we're winding down winter sports. Um, we don't have wrestlers on our campus right now, but we do on Saturday. We're hosting districts. And so that's actually, um, a whole campus effort. Our culinary class is, uh, cooking food for the, um, I don't remember what it's called, but it's the room where all the hospitality room. Hey, thanks, guys. Yeah, they're cooking for that. We have different people doing a bunch of different things. So it's really a group effort. Shout out to Dave for organizing that and, uh, Maria Thompson as well. And then, um, we also wanted to acknowledge the fact that Swimming State leaves, um, today. And then we have Basketball Senior Night. So those are some winter events. This last weekend, we celebrated sending, um, quite a few students to Nationals for DECA. Um, and so we're really happy about that and proud of Ms. Fariman for sending students. And last but certainly not least, um, we had a special education focus at our staff meeting, um, this on Wednesday and our, it was totally staff run. So I wanted to shout out to Rebecca Gerber, Sophie Gordon, Skylar Glines, and then two of our general education teachers, Anne Zacki and Anna Redding for running a staff meeting that was so smooth and really informative for all staff. So that's all for PHS.
I know you're, I know you're surprised, but I have a question. Um, who's invited to the CTE night? Are the middle school, are the eighth graders coming? Or have you, I mean, or is it just that, not just the high schoolers?
It's everybody. We actually, we sent out the flyer district wide and have been doing some family promo. Um, it's not just for incoming ninth graders, but that's one of our audiences. I'm really just trying to incorporate or let the community know what opportunities exist on campus. So everybody's invited.
Good evening. Amy Hans here with food service and just give you a quick little update. I feel like I haven't seen you guys or spoken in a couple of weeks here. So I apologize. I've been running from kitchen to kitchen, but our meal counts are actually up this, this time this year, 10,000 compared to what they were last year at this time. We've also actually utilized or allocated and will be using throughout the rest of this year, an additional $19,000 above what our, uh, yearly entitlement for commodities is. We've already used 60% of our farm to school additional grant and 100% of our supply chain disruption grant. So just lots of, lots of grants and things working for us and moving forward really well in food service. And then I just want to end it with, as I've been working in all these kitchens, I've had some new hires that I'm really, uh, proud to share and get on boarded and into your schools if you haven't met them or seen them yet. But Caitlin Furin is with us at Talent Elementary and Susan Deloigne also is with us at Talent Elementary. And Tamara Rather will be joining us next week here at Orchard Hill.
Thank you so much. Anything from the board? Oh, yes, please.
Hi, hi, everybody. I just wanted to do a couple of quick, um, Kelly Soder, Director of Equity and Community Care. I just wanted to do, give you a quick, um, update that we have received another grant, um, from the Oregon Department of Education. We applied with a consortium with Central Point School District and Ashland School District for, uh, the support of our LGBTQ success, student success, um, particular for that, for that realm. And, um, it was, and we were awarded, we were awarded a grant right now. It's just, uh, the rest of this biennium grant. It's about 200,000 to share amongst our region, really to, to, um, connect our, our community of, of youth to different communities and think about how to provide leadership and support and connections. Uh, so right now it's only until June 30th. There is potentially an opportunity for renewal. So we're going to work hard to get that in play and, um, be up in, in position for a renewal.
Thank you so much. Grants keep coming. We like it. Excellent. Anything from the board? Okay. Student representative report. Good evening.
Hi. So right now, uh, coming up on April 20th, Link Crew is going to be hosting a freshman and families night where freshmen can come with their families and play games against them. Um, we are working hard on all the details, trying to get all the games together, but we just want all the freshmen to get together with their families, just be involved with them and just have some fun with their family. That's basically why we're trying to do that. Um, Ms. Cross hit a lot of our sports. So I was going to talk about the wrestling team hosting districts and the swim boys going to state. But also our basketball teams have been going, have been doing really good right now. Last week, we, on Friday, they got two wins, both varsity boys and varsity girls against KU. And then yesterday, all JV teams and our girls varsity won against, um, Hidden Valley again at their house. Um, and then right now, I was going to hit on the FFA auction coming up next Sunday, the, um, February 26th. The doors open at 5:30 and dinner starts at 6:00. Um, also next week, FFA will be hosting our first ever Ag Bash, which is a set of competitions between other schools. So like all, so we're competing against the FFAs from Rogue River, Eagle Point, Crater, Hidden Valley, North Valley, and Prospect. And there's going to be five events that we're going to be competing, um, against them with. It's going to be a floral making competition, a cake decorating competition, a trivia, um, thing, a relay race, and the biggest one, a welding competition. Um, this is an opportunity for all FFA students to show off their skills. Uh, I was also going to point out how DECA is competing right now and got two third place trophies, one in automotive services, service marking, marketing and hospitality services. And we were in the top eight for sports and entertainment and marketing management. And lastly, uh, it was SRO appreciation day, um, yesterday as well. And everyone was so happy and it was so nice to see how everyone showed how much we appreciate Officer Hall and everything that he has done for us.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Do we have any student reps joining us online? Okay. Okay, great. Uh, we'll move to citizens comments. Did we receive any, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak before the board? Okay, I'll save you a long read then. And Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. I just have a couple of things. One thing is, uh, as a tradition, we share the out of state trips. We have some spring out as to state trips coming up. Uh, just a reminder of process, we don't need to use these for action, but just for the board to, uh, be aware of them. And then the last thing I have is, um, we, uh, this time of year, we kind of take our district office show on the road and do a state of the district to each of the schools. And we had our first one at Talent Elementary this afternoon. And, uh, it was great to get out there and, and we share, uh, some challenges, some opportunities, some funding, um, uh, challenges and opportunities coming up next year's calendar and just kind of take some general questions. So it was a great discussion today with staff and we'll have, uh, four more, actually five more, because we'll do it with the district office as well. Uh, and I'll put, uh, let you know when those are, uh, if you want to join in those state of the districts talk. Uh, they're typically after school and I'll email those dates out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Brent? Okay. Next, we have a program report. Very excited for this one, La Clinica.
Thank you, Chairman Campbell. I'd like to introduce Elise from La Clinica. She's amazing. And we, um, with Phoenix School are very grateful for our partnership with La Clinica, also grateful to the school board for increasing the partnership with La Clinica because it really comes directly from, um, input of our families and our students, um, for those services. So, um, I'd like to introduce you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Elise Travertini. I'm the School Based Health Center Director for La Clinica. Um, today I did, uh, put together a PowerPoint. Hire up. Oh, boy. So I'm not used to this. Really, right there. Better? Okay. All right. So what I want to present tonight around is really the partnership that we have created with the Phoenix Talent School District. Um, I'm just going to say next slide. This is, that's not me. Okay. So how did this partnership start? So our partnership started way back in 2003. We actually had a nurse who, um, was serving Phoenix Elementary. Her name was actually Marcy Robert Shaw. So anybody who has been historian and a dinosaur like myself over 18 years, um, we had a nursing program there. And about 2005, they decided to make it into a full school based health center. And what our full school based health centers have usually on campus is, um, they have a provider, they have a nurse, they have behavioral health, a benefits eligibility specialist. And this year, along with your school district, we actually put a community resource specialist. So in 2019, I know it's super exciting. In 2019, the Student Success Act funding came down, right? It was super exciting. There was a billion dollars infused in the education side and had all of these different aims. And one of them was behavioral health. And so La Clinica said, okay, how can we come together, um, and support school districts, knowing that we have the billing mechanism to support the services and, and, and really the school district has the startup funding. And so we approached all different school districts and said, hey, here's the program that we're, we're going to propose. Partner with us for two years for whatever you want to partner with. And then after that, we can sustain it. So it usually takes roughly about two to three years for us to get a health center up and running, get the community used to the health center, the staff used to the health center, all of the workflows. And then after that, we have the billing mechanisms to help support that. So Phoenix Talent, you guys did your job. You went, you engaged your community, you engaged your parents, your students, all the amazing things. And interestingly enough, this process that we're talking about tonight was highlighted in an ODE OHA partnership paper. So this went out through the state on, um, how to do this, how to do it well. And Phoenix Talent, La Clinica were highlighted in that, which is super cool, I think. Um, and, and it's been such a pleasure to work with Tiffany and Kelly and the whole group. So let's see here. So based off the needs assessments, the school district decided that they were going to really make more access and equity around culturally sensitive behavioral health and, and medical services at their schools. This was the top priority. And what, what we ended up doing is we ended up putting in healthcare services in four new schools that we hadn't, we had not been in years prior. So that brought in Talent Elementary, Talent Middle School, Orchard Hill Elementary, and actually Armadillo Tech. And those services look like two days of nursing, five days a week of behavioral health, um, access to a benefits eligibility specialist, so they could enroll families on insurance plans and OHP. And then the community resource specialist, just like the community resource specialist that you have in your school district, they help support any other needs that the families have. So access to food, help with paying bills, kind of those things that are not traditionally healthcare held, um, they help link those families up. Next slide. So this slide really goes over some of what we have provided. So it was very timely, this partnership, because right after we approached, COVID seemed to hit. Um, and so a lot of our medical support for the last two years have been around vaccines. They've been around testing. They've been around just really, how do we get kids into school healthy? And if they're not healthy, make sure that they have all the supports that they need. Um, the behavioral health specialist, what we have seen in the last two to three years, unfortunately, is we've seen kids and families struggle more. Those COVID years have affected youth and families in such a interesting way. We're actually starting to see kind of the fallout, and I think in our kids now. And whether that is coming back to school and the anxiety of being away from peers and folks for that long depression, anxiety, um, some trauma, uh, suicide alley, you name it, we're, we're seeing it. And it's, and the referrals are increasing and the acuity level of what we're seeing are increasing as well. Next slide. So this next slide shows what does the revenue look like? So the dark blue is the first year that we partnered with you. And the quarters, um, the quarters, those are every three months. I couldn't tell you exactly how the quarters roll out. I only have the first quarter of this year on there. So if you look at that yellow, that is our first year quarter. So it shows, what this shows is exactly what I was talking about before, is how our revenue starts to increase over time. So even in the first quarter of this year, that has superseded the last two years, knowing that this model we've been able to replicate works, right? So it allows the school, school district to put that initial investment and then take that investment and put it someplace else and still have all of these services up and running. Next slide. So what made this successful? Um, us to communicate, communication between leaderships. So between us and the district, this, the principals, you know, we want to know when things aren't going well so we can figure out how to fix it. Um, the flexibility, um, building trust around reliability and honesty and consistency, having aligned missions, I will say that is 110%. We are super aligned with what Phoenix Talent School Districts are wanting to do and do. It's just lovely. And then we have the ability to bill. Um, and we also have the medical and behavioral health expertise. So the oversight of the folks doing the therapy, the oversight of the folks doing the nursing, we have built into our system, um, supervision to make sure that they are in the guidelines of their, of their swim lane essentially, and that they're, they're operating at the highest level that they can. So back in March, the school district went back to your community and you said, okay, how did we do? What else do we need to do? Um, what was ranked in priorities were physical and mental health and emotional health again. Um, your well-rounded education, education, extended learning opportunities and reduced class sites. So what were some of the requests? The requests were, we need a health center at Phoenix High School. Um, and to help expand some of the support of La Clinica in the schools. Uh, and then there was expanded mental health support. I'm going to say mental health is the biggest need across, really the state. We're seeing it. That is the biggest ask across the state in schools is we need support in behavioral health. Next slide. So who are we seeing? In the last year, we're talking calendar year. So it goes from January to December 16th, which is right around Christmas break. So I cut it off there. Um, 56% of the population that we serve are non-Hispanic with 33% that are. 70% of our youth were under 18 and 30% were either staff or family members. And that's mostly attributed to vaccines. 75% of our population is Medicaid, um, 21% private insurance, and then we had four that were self-paid. So that 4% are the folks that we really try to get into our benefits eligibility specialist so we can get some sort of insurance to help support them. And then 44% fell below the poverty line, um, with an extra 24% who qualified for our federal funding. So being an FQHC, we are able to support families who fall below the 200% um, poverty line. And we can use federal funding to help supplement any costs that would come up. Next slide. So what have we seen over the last year? We've seen over 923 students for 5,012 visits. So 70% of these visits are behavioral health. Part of it makes sense because the, the behavioral health or the therapist is there five days a week and the nurse is really only there two days a week. Um, and only one of the sites currently this year, um, through school based medical providers. So we are adding a medical provider under, um, for at Phoenix High School. Um, and then next year, we'll be looking at actually creating a full school based health center that has the full model like Phoenix Elementary. Next slide. The other piece that we added last summer was we wanted to increase access and availability to the families in, in Phoenix. So we opened up Phoenix Elementary for five days a week during the summer, five days a week of mental health support and one day a week of medical. At the time, we didn't have much medical to be able to support it. That's been kind of a difficult piece in, in hiring. Um, but even with that one day that actually started in July, we saw roughly about five medical visits a day, um, and served about 46 patients. A lot of the visits were around sports physicals. So we turned sports physicals into well-child visits. And what we found this summer is we offered, or last summer, we offered six sports physical well-child clinics throughout all the school districts. It wasn't enough. So this next year, we're actually increasing our medical days at Phoenix Elementary to two days a week. And we're going to be offering, um, those sports physical clinics at least 10 times throughout the summer. And we're going to start it earlier. So last year, we started at the end of July to August, and we just were not able to get enough of the kids in. But what we did here is the kids that we were able to get in, sometimes it was the very first time they had ever played sports because they were never able to get that part done for them to be able to participate. So that was really neat. Next slide. So Phoenix Talent finished up their two-year commitment on those four sites that I had previously discussed back in August. And they decided to reinvest a portion of that funding to open Phoenix High School this year. So, um, we are in a shared space in Phoenix High School. It's been, it's been a challenge to try to coordinate and figure it out. The medical services really didn't start until November, but since November to about January, we've been able to serve about 58 But since November to about January, we've been able to serve about fifty-eight individual students for over a hundred and sixty-four visits. So kids are wanting to come in. This is not capturing the mobile health center piece. That falls under, weirdly enough, a different department, so I don't have those numbers. But that's just them coming into our nurse, our therapist and, and doing their thing. So Phoenix Talent has gone from one school with one health center back in two thousand and three, two thousand and five. So here we are in twenty twenty-three, and you have La Clinica's healthcare services in all of your schools. Next slide. So the future, what's next? Because we just don't stop there. So coming soon, August twenty-three, John is telling me that we will able to remodel a space in the Phoenix High School and have a full school-based health center that has a provider on site, two days a week, nursing support at least three days a week, we'll have an M A supporting the provider. Um, we'll have two therapists there. We're currently trying to hire on the second therapist, so we have one already hired for the high school and recruiting for a second. We're also going to be increasing a behavioral health clinician over at Talent Middle. Um, and we have a student intern who has already accepted the position, so that one's pretty much already filled. And then we're currently working with the school district, um, around the behavioral health grant that they received back in January on increasing, um, support to the behavioral health needs and really creating that seamless inclusive system to serve youth and families. And thank you, and that's it.
Thank you so much. I'm sure we'll have some questions. Questions? Y'all don't, I do. You don't have any questions, Sarah? Oh my goodness.
I just want to reiterate the partnership with La Clinica and, and especially Elise. I mean, just your, um, dedication to our district and really getting these started, um, has been a huge lift. And, uh, the timing was amazing, right before the fire to have that partnership set up, uh, because they were very nimble and flexible to provide mental health services online and, and, um, you know, just doing what it takes to serve our kids and families. So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, a couple of questions for you. Um, if I'm a student in crisis and need mental health supports, how quickly can I be seen? How does that process work?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Um, our model is, am I not slow? Part of our model is, uh, any kid that's in crisis, um, we work with the schools, so many schools have a protocol around suicidality. We, we see any kid irregardless of whether they're a patient or not, and then we call the family that day because it's a safety concern. Um, but it's, it is, if they're not able to respond, our therapist is. And so it, it's in conjunction with the school. At, um, any, any youth in crisis for either a medical service. So if there's a medical crisis on campus, the nurse will go out irregardless of any kid. Um, and the same thing, the behavioral health is there to support as well.
That's great. Um, and you mentioned, you know, being able to bill and things like that. What if there's a student who can't afford to pay? What happens then?
Yeah, um, so, so we, in our department, our school-based health center department, um, we have this piece where if they fall below the two hundred, we can use our federal funding. In our primary health center, we have different slides, slide A, B, C, D, and E. In school-based, it's one slide and it slides to zero. And so we would figure those pieces out. Um, really, it's about access for youth. Um, and so we never want to deny a kid and we just, we, we essentially figure it out. If a youth is consenting for their own care, um, and this might get a little too into the weeds, they're considered their own guarantor, and so it's based off of their income. And I haven't seen a fourteen-year-old or fifteen-year-olds make over the two. I mean, that would be a pretty industrious student, but, but it's based off of them. And so that instantly slides as well for them.
That's great. Um, and then the last question, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing, um, disaggregated demographic data for us to look at. One of the things that caught my eye was that we have, um, a lower proportion of Hispanic students accessing care than our population. And I was just wondering if you could speak to that, what you're doing to just make sure that all of our students are aware of the resources available to them. And, and perhaps that's a good question for our staff too.
Yeah, so what we try to do is in all of our health centers, we try to have at least one bilingual staff on staff. Um, we have one bilingual therapist, they're, they're like the little unicorns. So if you can find them, send them our way. Um, our bilingual, bicultural ther- therapists are hard to find. But so what we've done instead is we have certified interpreters who help support those needs. Um, and, and I think part of it too is sometimes it might be with the community resource specialist to say, hey, we've got this, this, this service. I know Laura Mallett has a great relationship with our Spanish-speaking population in this area. And she will literally walk families down into the health center and say, you need to sign up for all of these things. And so I think it's that partnership for us to increase that because our goal is really to be culturally responsive um, and provide as much bilingual support as possible. All of our paperwork is also translated into Spanish and all the accoutrements so that, that families feel comfortable.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any, anything else? I knew you'd come around, Sarah.
So you mentioned at the high school that, um, a fourteen-year-old would come in and potentially act as their own guarantor. Can you, what, what is the age where that happens? How is, can you just follow where I'm going with that?
Yeah, sure. So there's adolescent law in the state of Oregon, and it states that any youth fourteen and up can, can consent for their own outpatient behavioral health. And any youth fifteen and up can, can consent for their medical care outpatient. And so that's where that guarantor piece comes in. And I will also, I just want to preface too, we always try to include the parent as much as possible. Sometimes there are situations where it's not really conducive to have the family in, but we, we really encourage that.
That's great. Thank you. Peyton, did you have any questions? Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I just wanted to make sure if you had any questions that you could.
I have one more, which may or may not be, um, right. There's a bill in the legislature, Brent, I'm looking at you. There's a bill in the legislature that's talking about medically interpreting and, um, exempting school boards from, or I'm sorry, school districts from having to provide that service. But where are, can you speak to how, I don't know.
I'm reading your mind, I think. Yes, there is a bill, and it's a bill that really kind of cleans up that language and, and limits the liability of healthcare and, and schools for that medical and, uh, uh, interpreting, because that might not be, um, um, feasible in, in, in every, every regard, especially in an emergency situation. And so, um, that seems to be something that'll go through because it was actually passed last short session. And so this is kind of a cleanup to that because they've been seeing some discrepancies in there. So, but we are, we are, uh, providing that, so. It would just limit the liability.
She's making me go before she goes. Um, I was wondering with this, um, full program that's coming to Phoenix High School, will there be a chance for students to, um, I know there's, there's other things, but I'm thinking in the future that someone who's interested in healthcare could be, to be exposed to this and also be a part of this process. And I know that other, um, other clinics in the area have entertained this and talk, I've talked to them about how they want to go somewhere and have that as a learning base, like part of the C T E program. Um, I'm just wondering if that's something that we could talk about in the future.
Actually, we have a meeting set up with Kalen around, um, it's called Pathways to Healthcare. So we have a, La Clinica has a new department called the Learning Well. This, we, we received a grant called the How To Grant, and the How To Grant is really around workforce development. Um, and part of that is how do we get high school youth engaged, training, and on the path to do the thing? Um, just like the Mercy Flight Program that you're talking about, there's some pieces that we want to be able to offer, whether if somebody wants to start learning how to go towards an M A program. And so that when they come out of the high school. So there is some of that talk. It lives, it is part of La Clinica, it's in our Learning Well Department, which is really going to be more geared towards education and learning and all of those things. So we have a meeting set up, I'm kind of the liaison, um, between the school districts and his name's Max Brooks, um, who is our, our person, to start, um, looking at those things.
So glad to hear that.
Yeah. The other piece too, actually to tap into that, we're actually trying to offer more, uh, behavioral health internships, actually in the school district as well, to help the workforce for the behavioral health therapist and the behavioral health associate level. So, so if you can think of the therapist kind of meets with that really high-level kids, they, you know, there's this big gray area of youth that aren't necessarily at the therapist level, but they really need some support in here. So we're, we're, we're offering more internships for this level. And then actually, we're working with the school district on how do we train up staff to help support some of these things, those check-ins, those things that kids need so that they don't need to get to this level to get support, they can actually get it here. If the families need resources, there's the community resource specialist and working more towards, towards the ideal. So.
It was just a comment. Thank you so much, Elise. It's really great to have you here and sharing this information. And I'm really, really grateful that we are really thinking about, um, integrating education and healthcare because I think that these two huge systems have consistently been, consistently have been, um, separated. And I really appreciate that they're not only a way to provide support for families, but also support to really create paths for youth to, I don't know what that sound is, but, um, I know it's that sound. Uh, but finding ways to, um, encourage youth in healthcare, um, professions. And I really appreciate the call out for, um, qualified certified interpretation. Any individual who, uh, who goes to a federally qualified health center such as La Clinica or Ru Community. By law, they are, um, they are supposed to be, um, supported with a qualified certified interpreter, which means that this interpreter has had a significant amount of training and education around, um, medical terminology and how to work with a provider and a patient. Because as much as we love to just bring in whoever to do interpretation or translation, um, and sometimes that's all we have, and I understand that. We really want to be honoring the individual by providing the most respectful and dignified sort of support for these folks to ensure that there's health and wellbeing and ensuring, um, people's health outcomes are positive. So thank you, thank you for all that you're doing and for this really beautiful partnership and integration. It's super exciting.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
I have one more. Is Jessica here? Is she hiding behind there? All right, um, last meeting talked about resources to help teachers get or, um, classified staff or those who are interested, um, in working at the school to, um, continue their education to become teachers. So is that something that they're getting funding for? But is that something that potentially the funding that the school district gets to kind of train up our own, which is something that we just really love to do in this district? So is this type of program with a C T E potential pathway something that we could use those funds for or those available? I'll stop talking.
Are you talking about, um, to support students on a pathway? Or are you talking about, uh, supporting existing staff?
I guess interested staff because if there's, um, caring adults in the school that already have a connection with the students and they might be interested in pursuing, um, maybe they aren't interested in pursuing a classroom teacher scenario, but they might be interested in pursuing a behavioral health or support counselor type of scenario. Um, if, if there's help for that because we desperately, right, need them, so.
So the grants that I have access to that we are utilizing are specifically to support our staff in continuing their education to become certified teachers or administrators, depending on the situation. Um, but I believe Kelly can speak to that because there is that also.
Yeah, I'll just add that, uh, Elise referenced this a few minutes ago too, but that's also part of our large school-based mental health grant is that component of placing interns and internships and having a pathway to potentially, for example, have a classified staff member, let's say a community care specialist, start as like a classified role, do professional development, do training, sort of this pathway and become a qualified mental health associate, and then even continue on a path if they're interested in that field, all the way up to a, uh, masters in social work and/or other pathway. So we're really hopeful that that's another way to, to grow our own in that way.
And then La Clinica has actually started for our mass, for folks who are going towards master work in social work or counseling. We actually started offering, um, paid internships to help keep people whole, right? So during their, so, so if they want to work part-time in their work and they do their internship, it helps them keep whole. And then actually this, so if, if people are wanting to go back, if you know people that are wanting to go back, this is the time to do it. There's a lot of state grants out there right now willing to do loan repayment. Um, Laura Bridges, the Behavioral Health Officer, La Clinica, and I almost have this roadshow now that we're talking to pers- perspective, either M S W students or, um, professional counseling students on how they can do this and that financially, they're not going to be in this giant hole. There is a really, this is the time to do it. Um, I'm an L C S W by trade, so I'm a licensed clinical social worker. And unfortunately, none of this was there. And so it was, it just felt like it was much more, a larger mountain to climb. Um, we're internally, we're actually trying to work with our Learning Well to create a, um, a visual of a pathway of if you want to start as a behavioral health associate and you want to go through these things, this is what it could look like and this is how it could be. Um, and that could be with whether it's your school staff that want to eventually go into it or even some of your high school students who say, I want to be a qualified mental health associate. This is, somebody helped me, this, we do see this a lot, somebody helped me, and so I want to help somebody else. Um, to be a qualified mental health associate, and again, I might be getting a little too in the weeds, it is either a bachelor's degree or it's three years of experience and having all these different competencies. There's actually a board called MACBO. They hold the same credentialing for peer support specialists and your drug and alcohol counselors. And so it's very much, it looks like a licensing board for, for a master's level person where you have to accrue hours, you have to have clinical supervision, you take a test, right? Um, and that they hold that credential. So the program that we're talking with Kelly that they got the grant for, that would be taking some of the school staff and walking them up through that process.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the partnership and thank you for coming today. Thanks for the thoughtful questions. Um, let's move on to integrated guidance.
Yeah, um, Mr. Santi's here to kind of, uh, walk you through the slides. And this has been, uh, um, over the last several months, really started in the fall with some data gathering. Uh, but just give you an update on where we are with the integrated guidance that is due in March. Um, and then next meeting, this will be an action item. Uh, also have to open it to a public hearing as well, uh, per rule. So, Mr. Santi.
Thanks, Brent. Um, so I'm going to apologize in advance to everybody here. This is going to be a long presentation, but it's statutorily required, so it's not my fault. Um, no, we'll try to get through it as quickly as we can, but I do want to get your questions answered. So, um, let's go ahead and get into it. Um, we're just, the point of this presentation is to inform the board what our plan is for our integrated guidance, um, application. Um, so we want to know, we want you guys to come away understanding what is the plan? What is the kind of the main components? And where did all the information come from that helped us guide this plan? And then what's going to come up next? So like I said, the purpose is to share what our team came up with, where we got all that data, who we heard from, who gave input into this plan. And then essentially to inform the board and seek board approval because we need board approval in order to make, make application to the state. So the integrated guidance, the purpose of it is, uh, in theory, anyway, the state took six different grant programs and integrated them into one application process. The thinking was that that could streamline the process a little bit. Um, and in some ways it does, and in some ways it doesn't. But, um, it combines all the processes we normally have to go through in terms of community engagement, doing these assessments, using our, um, equity lens and. But it combines all the processes we normally have to go through in terms of community engagement, doing needs assessments, using our equity lens and and then try to come up with an application process. It's a little bit more simple, avoids the redundancy of giving the same information and multiple applications. So things like that. So here's the six programs. This is the, the graphic you guys can look at. The next slide is going to go over each of the programs in a little more detail, but these six programs, we've had to apply for those grants individually in the past, and we're just finishing up this year with all of those programs individually. And then moving into next year, that'll be part of this integrated guidance. But the, the idea is that these, the state chose these six because they thought that these weave together fairly well in terms of the application process, the information required and so forth. So here are those six programs broken out a little bit. High School Success, we've heard a lot about. That used to be Measure 98. We get a good amount of money. Those first two, we get actually a good amount of money from. The Student Investment Account, the SIA, you guys will remember the last few years having heard a report like this for the SIA. And so many of those requirements continued into the integrated guidance. The Continuous Improvement Planning, that's something that we go through as a district and as individual schools. And then our SIP at the, at the district levels, a three-year SIP, school levels, we do those each year. CTE is another thing. We're involved in a consortia with CTE, but we still have to make application each year as part of that. Our Early Indicator and Early Indicator Intervention Systems. That's essentially, it's not a huge grant. Essentially, we pay for our data dashboard with that grant. And then the Everyday Matters money is actually embedded across all the other programs. And that's, that grant has to do with engagement, attendance, things like that, school culture. So our planning team, I'm not going to go through all the names up there. I do want to highlight that we have one student that was on the team and that's Ms. Peyton Croy. She gave some great input in our planning process. We want to thank her for that. Dawn was our board member that was on the team. And then many of the other folks in this room were a part of that team that developed this plan. So this, this is a state slide that they want us to share with you. What's required in the planning process? You must use an equity lens. We're going to talk about that in a second. You have to have community engagement. That's been true for many of these other grants in the past. Tribal consultation, we don't have that requirement. Comprehensive needs assessment, we did do that with each school as well as at the district level. Our quality education model, student success plans, we had to consider as well, reviewing our CTE. And so I'm not going to read the rest of that, but basically those are all the things that went into developing the plan that we're, that we're going to give you guys today, or at least the highlights. Equity lens, an equity lens is simply, what questions do you ask yourself to make sure that you are considering all kinds of communities and who are you potentially impacting? And so you're making sure who's getting impacted, how are they being impacted, impacted? Are they being included in the process? How might this, this, any decisions we make increase or decrease? Or ignore equity or their ability to participate, their ability to thrive? So when we go through this process, we're asking ourselves these questions. And in fact, I know this happened because I watched Tiffany do it several times in groups when she pulled it out and was asking questions along with Kelly and a few others. So we're trying to be very intentional with how we approach the development of plans to make sure that we're inclusive. So just to give you guys some quick highlights, in terms of our community engagement, here's just, I think, six bullet points that we pulled out as a team that were positive that were impressions that came from our communities. And when we say communities, we're talking about our students, our families, our staff. Those are the three major communities that we're considering in this application process. So I don't want to read all of those, but there's a few really, really interesting ones to call out. What I really appreciate was almost all of our families feel really comfortable coming into our schools, interacting with our personnel. Our students feel very comfortable with student-teacher relationships. That's a highlight for us. I think across K through 12, students feel very good about their teachers and working with them. I also really appreciate seeing our Hispanic Latino students citing significantly higher senses of belonging than, than the average for our district. So that's greater than 10% higher senses of belonging than the average score for the students in our district. So that makes me feel like we're doing a good job making sure that we're welcoming that particular community. So you guys can read the rest of those, but a lot of good highlights from our engagement with our community. Here's some opportunities for improvement that were kind of identified in this process. Our families want to see better two-way communication between home and school. They think we do a good job giving them information, but there's not good systems for getting back to them or for them getting back to us, I should say. Our levels of engagement with classes at the secondary level are fairly low, not fairly, very low. Only 25% of our kids felt really engaged in their classes. And that puts us in the bottom decile nationally. So that's something that we definitely want to work on. We have some issues with our non-binary binary students and students of two or more races, races or ethnicities feeling lower senses of belonging and school safety. Everybody, in terms of our staff, felt like we need to improve cultural awareness and action. It's actually been improving. It's been trending upward over the last few years, but everybody wants to see that continue. And then our teachers' overall perception of school climate has, has dipped a little bit in the last couple of years. Then in terms of needs assessment, here are some things that came out. Attendance, academic and climate engagement, just some data points. Regular attenders have dropped down to 73% last year. And that's, remember, regular attenders, that's a measure. If a student attends 90 or more percent of the school year, they're a regular attender or they're chronic non-attenders if they're less than that. So 73% of kids were regular attenders last year. The goal for the state is 90%. And then you can see we've got some subgroups that we want to see improve. Have significantly dropped in the last couple of years. Academically, you guys have seen these numbers. Our third grade ELA was at 28% with the state average at 40. Grade eight math proficiency was at 12%. State average is 27. And then our Hispanic and Latinx performance on our I Ready was the lowest of all subgroups. So those are our focus areas in academics, climate and engagement. We have secondary students, we've already talked about significant lack of engagement with their classes. Teacher perception of climate has dropped. And then again, our students in certain areas feeling unsafe. So here's our plan. The priorities that we've developed for this plan are essentially, we want to continue to advance our equity work with students in all groups. We want to improve and expand our programs to create strong, well-rounded educational system for students. And then we want to foster engagement with all of our communities to leverage our resources to support students. So outcomes, these are the outcomes that we want to see happen. So there are seven of them there and you can think of these as goals. So outcomes are kind of like goals. And we'll just go through them quickly. We want to decrease disparities in student achievement with all subgroups. We want all students, staff and community members to feel safe, respected and valued. Provide opportunities for families to engage in two-way communication. Ensure families are engaged, not overwhelmed with the expectation to participate in their child's K-12 education. Students will develop proficient academic and social skills to allow them to access current and future opportunities. Our students will be prepared for college and their career and we'll provide equitable opportunities for all students. So those are the overarching goals that this plan is trying to address. In terms of strategies, there's nine strategies up there. I'm not going to read those all out to you. But what those strategies do is they try to support each of those outcome areas. So every outcome has at least one strategy, some have two to try to support that outcome and somehow even have three actually. So you can read through those, but they all point toward the outcome areas. And then here are some key investments. These are the on-the-ground things that we're going to do, that we're going to fund or are currently funding that we think will get at those strategies and those outcomes. So many of things, these things, you'll look and see, geez, we're already doing that. Well, yes, we are. A lot of those things are already paid for out of our current SIA and our current high school success funds. These are things that our team felt like we're being successful, that we're already doing. Although there are a few additional ones that we currently aren't doing. For example, that school nurse, that district-wide, we are paying for a school nurse right now through Asante, but talking about potentially moving that into a, a district employee position. So just a shifting of funds really. But most of what you see up there in those key investments are things we are currently doing right now. Again, there's some new training that we're proposing, some physical plant improvements that we're proposing in the plan. But a lot of this stuff is already ongoing. So in terms of tiered support, the state wants you guys to understand that we've, as a team, when we were in the planning process, we were looking at the budget that we had and much of the budget, again, is already being allocated or has been allocated. And so what they wanted us to do was also plan what if, what if there was some additional funding? So here's some examples of things that we talked about, additional high school AP offerings. This actually came out of something that Peyton had brought up in our meeting. Expansion of dual-language certified staff members, we've talked about that a lot. Hiring licensed media specialists for a district-wide position. These are all things that we're talking about that we can potentially add, given the right funding. So here's how the state understands success. This is a really busy slide. I didn't make this one. But this is how the state says they understand the success for schools and districts. So the first thing is the longitudinal performance growth targets. Those, you can kind of see, they've got a little, a little chart there down in the bottom left-hand corner. They have a calculation that they use for every one of the five performance areas. For example, four-year graduation rate, regular attenders. They've got a formula that shows what longitudinally we should, we should do in order to be successful. So they look at those primarily. They look at high school success eligibility, our CTE requirements and how we're meeting those. And you can see the rest of them. There's nine things that they're looking at to determine how they understand success. Yep. Which are you, which slide are you on? The previous one? No worries. A, B, C. Yeah. So, so groups A, B and C are sample groups. So it could be, for example, you'd plug in there Hispanic students or you would plug in there whatever subgroup population that you wanted to recognize or excuse me, track. What they're saying is those would go in there. Then there's going to be gap-closing targets. There's baseline targets and stretch targets for each group as well as for our overall. Then that's what those longitudinal growth performance targets do. Sure. So go ahead and bring these all up. I don't know why they're coming up separately. They should not have. So this is what ODE is going to do. They've given us the data for the longitudinal analysis. And so then they're going to use guidance, we're going to use guidance established by ODE along those metrics. So if you see there, those little bullet-pointed metrics, those are the ones that they're going to measure us on. That's just a given. So we do have some goals set in those areas, but that's something the state's going to measure every, every district and every school in as we move forward in terms of the LPGTs. You're going to get to hear that acronym a lot. So these are what they call the five common metrics. So the other local metrics are things that we get to develop. And so we've done some of that as well. So here's how we in Phoenix Talent are going to understand success, how this plan is going to be measured as far as we're concerned. So we want to see narrowing of the academic achievement gap for our focal student groups. And the focal student groups, that's just another, that's kind of the new ODE nomenclature for students who have generally or historically been disadvantaged. So focal student groups. Meeting or exceeding the state average in third grade language arts and eighth grade math in OSAS scores, that's another way we're going to understand success. Maintaining or improving ninth grade on-track and four-year grad rates. And the reason we're saying maintaining is that our numbers in those areas are already really, really good. You guys have seen those numbers. Our ninth grade on-track and our four-year grad rates have been great. So we're going to look to maintain or improve. Meeting the state's regular attender targets for a whole group of students along with each measured subgroup. And then finally, increasing a sense of belonging, engagement and safety among our, all of our communities. So as long as we're seeing those numbers moving up, we're going to understand that as success as well. So here's what happens next. The application window opens March 1st. We're going to need to get board approval on our plan at our next board meeting, hopefully. Once board has approved that plan, we'll submit it in that window of March. ODE will begin their review. That QALP review, that's Quality Assurance Learning, I don't remember, but basically it's teams that ODE puts together to review each of our plans as a district. They will review our plan in addition to ODE's review to try to get some calibration. And then approved plans will happen in June, they say. I will be shocked, but that's what they say is they'll be done in June. And then they will issue grant funding for the next year. So questions, if you guys have any? I know it's a lot and that's really only bullet points. And please understand that's only, that's not everything we're going to do over the next three years. That's simply what we're going to track in terms of these six plan or six areas.
Thank you so much. Questions? Yeah, go ahead.
So I actually appreciate this. It condenses a little bit of all of those and hopefully makes some less work for all of those things that you're having to track. My comment is on slide eight, which is consider the quality education model and student success plans. And I guess I'll just comment in public setting that I would hope that they would fund us at the quality education model and not the current sort of.
I think they're still $2 billion short of the quality education model.
You're here, Sarah. Any other questions?
I just want to commend Erin. This has started early in 2022, January, February, we were going to meetings and this has been a huge undertaking and just him coordinating all of this and this team and putting together these slides for this presentation and working on that application. So Dawn's been a part of those meetings and at the end of long days and some really kind of pushing out some brain power. Just appreciate everybody that's been a part of that in this group. So.
So at the risk of sounding uninformed, I don't understand why we, I mean, this is great information. I know sometimes we bemoan statutorily required process. Has this replaced the SIA process? Okay, so this is, this is the new process by which we have to complete this in order to be eligible for SIA funding.
And all the other funding groups.
Okay, all those other things. Okay, great. Well, it's really good information. And I again, want to reiterate, I appreciate all the effort that went into this and I think it's, it's great that we can do this planning and really take a hard look at what's going well and what's not going well. I wanted to just ask about, because it seems like attendance is one of our biggest issues right now. And I'm looking at our plan and I think it's great. I wanted to get a little bit more about how we feel like our plan is going to help us improve our regular attenders.
That's a good question. I thought somebody would bring that up. So there's nothing specifically called out in that plan that you see right there that directly addresses attendance. So what the team was talking about was what makes a student want to come to school? A student wants to come to school when they're engaged, when they have something that's drawing them there. And so a lot of what we're doing in attendance in the plan has to do with creating more opportunities for students, more things that they can connect with that will draw them, make sure they're coming. But in addition, and Brent's always careful to say this, that plan is not all we're doing. So for example, just today, we had Joe out at, out in classrooms, taking pictures, getting on social media, saying, here's what you're missing if you're not here. So we've got a whole campaign going on right now with Everyday Matters, Every Moment Matters. So we're doing other things that aren't called out in the plan. But yes, specifically for the plan, it's all tangential things that are going to try to increase student engagement to get at attendance.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments?
I have a question. Besides motivating students to get here, what other means of support are you providing for students to get here? Because sometimes it's not necessarily that students are not excited to be here, you know, they're, they do have peers and so forth. But sometimes those limitations go beyond their desire to feel like they belong or engaged.
So every, every school has an MTSS team and an engagement team that works on individual student cases. So there's, there's issues at the individual family level where there could be barriers that don't have to do with school. And so those students' issues are worked on at the individual school level. And every school has a team and group of people that's dedicated to that and solving those kind of one, one-by-one issues.
Fantastic. And the care team is part of that.
A hundred percent.
Yep, what I thought. Another question. I'm looking at the team members for this planning committee, which is great and diverse. And I'm wondering, what things have you done to support folks that traditionally are not part of a bigger education system? Because these systems can be incredibly overwhelming and to ensure that there isn't tokenization of the individuals that are participating in this. And it isn't just like, we're here, we're writing your name down. Thanks for being here.
That's a good question. I don't know that we specifically had a process for that. Where those, all those names came from was obviously we've got administrators and staff. We wanted to make sure we had elementary and secondary. We want to make sure we had special ed representation. Parents, students, a lot of it was simply, here's a parent who's on a site council and they really enjoy doing this. Parents, students, a lot of it was simply, here's a parent who's on a site council and they really enjoy doing this stuff. And so when they came, how do we make sure that they're involved? They were put on small group teams and everybody in those, like the parents that were, the parent that was on my team had a lot to say in our meeting. But yeah, there was not a systematic way that you could say, let's make sure that everybody has some input. But I think, I'm pretty confident in saying that everybody that was there had, had, um, of input into the plan.
Thank you.
Good questions. Anything else? Eight. Good work. All right. Thank you, Aaron. Okay. Oh, I've been, no, I haven't. Okay. I thought I was logged out. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. We made it. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'll second.
Second. Any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next will be action items and the first item is the, uh, local service plan and SSA comprehensive support plan. Hear a motion for approval of the local service plan and SSA comprehensive support plan. Okay. Rick, thank you. Moved by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Polly. Thank you. Discussion. Yeah.
Anyway, this chart that we have, there's, uh, three, I'd say four of them we have not signed up for. And I'm just wondering, this is probably a question for Brent, why we didn't sign up for all of them. I noticed that one of the school districts did. Uh, is it a matter of money or is it, uh?
It, it's typically a bounder of, uh, the services. First of all, media and library, I think. Um, the ESD doesn't even have a license to media specialists. So, um, the way we get that right now is we work with another school district that does have a licensed media specialist. And so, um, we either do not need or use those services, we have other resources or that service isn't even available. So, um, some of those that have signed up, uh, for media libraries, but unless that's a that's, they don't even have one right now.
Okay. Otherwise we've really signed up for quite a bit of it.
Yeah. And I think this is, um, you know, the challenge with the à la carte is, um, kind of staying up to date and really kind of reviewing those each year and see if it makes financial sense to, uh, continue with those.
I notice Central Point has not signed up with, or hardly anything here.
They are, um, doing their, they pulled out of a lot of services for ESD. And some other districts are, um, have chosen to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other discussion? Don?
Hey, I was going to have discussion. Um, I even wrote notes down because so first of all, I would like to thank, um, Scott and his team for putting this one together and him answering my many, many questions from last meeting. Um, and I do know that ESDs are really important to our district and that um, we need them to function. And also the legislation loves to put in fundings that funnel through ESD. So we kind of need them. So, um, however, with that, I do have many concerns about this plan, um, that I spoke about before, but I wanted to reiterate them, um, again before voting. Uh, my first is the scheduling of the way the plan works is it's, you get it, you get one meeting to talk about it and then you vote on it. So there's not, if there's something that we, we would like changed or the district would like changed, there's not really, um, an option for that. And I kind of feel like like we should, like there should be some kind of discussion. I just, it's just kind of awkward, um, that there's no changes. So your option is vote yes or vote no. Um, it's not any like discussion or, or change. So that's kind of, um, different for me. Also, um, speaking of input, like I feel like the plan should have some more input, some input, um, formats. Um, I know that he does an informal, like ask the superintendent, but I would really like to see, um, in this plan, something about input. I don't know if that would be like a 360 evaluation for, um, the superintendent of ESDs. Um, if that would be, I like to see some kind of robust where they're asking the employees of the districts, uh, what is working for them, what they would like to see, what challenges are happening. Um, and I think it, I think right now, this is just my own personal opinion, but they haven't done this for a long time. So I think they almost have to do like site-based meetings and like everyone that does CTE, come to this meeting and we want to have some robust discussions about how to improve and how to enhance. And um, I think they need to do that for a lot of the à la carte menus and have a really robust, um, feedback, um, from the people that are using it daily, um, all the time instead of, you know, my understanding is it's like a ten, in 10 minutes of a superintendent conversation, how is it going? Well, the superintendent can't really get the feedback or say the feedback in that amount of time. Um, I'm also, let's see what else. Sorry. Uh, and I'd also like them to talk about growing the services. I know a lot of ESDs around the state during this feedback time about how they could grow and improve and maybe reach out to other ESDs and, and maybe have like the CTE programs, look at the other ESD programs to see what's working and kind of have that, um, platform base. Um, I'm also concerned about the, uh, special education. It seems like since I've been on the board and I apologize, my memory isn't quite correct, but in the last 10 years since I've been on the board, the, um, supports from, for special ed have been really similar or the same. And, oh, or down. Um, and so I feel like that department needs to be changed, especially the, um, districts that are wanting more inclusive practices or in, in, um, house type practices. It seems like a lot of them are, you know, send your kid over here. And I think that there needs to be more flexibility for districts that want more inclusive practices and for students. Um, I feel like the IEP is individual, but the choices that we're getting are not individualized. So I, um, that's another concern of the plan. Um, I think I read the plan twice. So sorry. Um, then the last one is, um, I think that was it. Hang on. Um, and so with all those concerns of the timeline, inclusion, feedbacks, I am thinking I'm going to vote no. Um, it was a really hard decision for me because I know we need ESD and I know we, um, they're really valued. I did some research. If I vote no and everybody votes yes, then that's it. If I vote no and the rest of the board, if it's, um, where the board consensus is no, 80% of the districts have to vote no for the service plan not to work. So even if our board happened to vote no, um, the service plan would go through. However, and I feel like that's good because we need a service plan. We need to do stuff, but I also feel like, um, we need to send a message that we need to do better for our students. And so that is why I'm choosing to vote no.
Thank you so much, Tom. Any other discussion?
Just a quick query clarification. If 80% of the districts vote yes, then it passes. Yeah. So just to.
I, um, have had some conversations with, um, staff after meeting, um, just to try to understand um, boots on the ground type of thing of, of how they're feeling, um, or the service level for ESD. And in serving on now the LPC committee, it's given me opportunity to, um, work closer with Dawn and to hear her talk about, um, ESDs throughout the state. And our ESD is the largest in the state and covers eight percent, eight or nine percent of the state. And so, um, I think, um, leadership matters. And I think that, um, with that amount of coverage, um, it'd be really great to see Southern Oregon, Oregon ESD leading the way and, um, connecting and, um, with how to do better. So, um, I reached out to staff to get their input on, um, and they think this, this service plan, you know, may serve the needs, but the overall potential service of, um, ESD could be improved with some of the things that I think Dawn, um, brought to light and specifically, um, division 22 standards, um, in the media specialist, um, drought, um, to have that specific, really challenging, uh, role to try to fill, um, not get some, some support. And that, that seems really base level, um, to ask. So, um, I will probably be voting no as well for the service plan and just the, um, opportunity to, um, I guess, send a message and really say our expectations maybe are a little higher than, than what's been presented.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other discussion?
Uh, I will. I will say this, uh, I think some of what you've expressed has merit and, and I, and I appreciate that. However, I, I don't know what the alternative is. I mean, they do provide services and, and which we cannot do. Uh, and they, that's been going on for a number of years now. I'm just wondering if we just cannot pass it and approve this, but at the same time, send a message, uh, of concern and, and what they are and let them know that, uh, next year it may be a little difficult to get it past this. So.
Yeah. Yeah. From what I understand, a, a yes vote says yes, support the local service plan. Uh, we're not, we don't have a vote to exit the ESD tonight or anything like that. And if 80% of the member districts pass the service plan, then it will pass. And the ESD is not going anywhere and we're not leaving the ESD. Yeah. But I think, uh, uh, a no vote does send a message and, uh, since we're speaking of that, I'm also going to vote no, uh, for many of the same reasons that Dawn stated, um, but also just to summarize, this is certainly one of the most challenging times in education history. And it's also one of the most ripe for innovation. And, um, I just feel like there's more opportunity to be innovative, um, and to find better ways to support students. And I, I have also heard that our expectations are not being met. And I understand that there are some challenges that may even be outside of their direct control. Um, but we got to buck up and we got to be innovative and find solutions to these problems. And I just don't feel like this plan addresses those. So I'll also be voting no.
Polly?
I too have been hearing from staff, um, and admin that there is inadequate support, especially in the CTE area. And also, um, I like, I feel like Rick where, you know, maybe we can work more closely with Scott and his team and see how they can help us improve that relationship that we have. And like you said, not the same old thing, just passing it through, but making some changes. Cause I really feel like honestly, at the heart of it and for my work, I've been working with them. I really feel like they are trying, but sometimes they're between a rock and a hard place. But I feel like he is receptive to hear what we're saying and why can't we have that open dialogue for sure.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Brent, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay.
With that, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca? Start with Dawn. Dawn?
No.
Rick?
Sarah?
No.
Nancy?
No.
Polly?
No.
Rebecca?
I'll vote yes.
And I vote no. Motion does not pass. Thank you. Next is renewal of teachers and administrator contracts. Hopefully this one is more favorable. Our school district. Just going to put that out there. Brent?
I have no comment. What you see is what you get. Um,
Okay. Any, uh, can I hear a motion for this item?
I move approval of the contract renewals for teachers and administrators as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved by Rebecca, seconded by Polly. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank our extremely hardworking staff for all that they do. And I will be voting yes on this item. All right. We'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
No, shouldn't.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Okay. Board policy, BCF advisory committees to the board.
Have a motion.
Uh, I'll try it again here. Uh, I move we, uh, adopt the changes to, uh, this policy without the green language that appear on the second page, second and third page.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Rick, seconded by Sarah. Discussion?
I, I just have one question. I guess, and, uh, you, you, you brought it up on, I think, last time is that it's, it says that the green language should be included. If we don't include it this time, it will have to be done in the future. And, uh, see what was the date on that thing?
Yes, September 15.
Yeah, 25, but yeah, 2025. So they must have a reason for pushing this thing so hard, but.
It's part of the statute, right? Yeah. There was a law that passed that said you have to have this equity committee.
And it has to be part of the policy. It cannot be just pointed.
That's a good question. I'm not sure of that. Did we get an answer on that?
Uh, on what type?
Whether the language has to be a part of this policy or do you have to just have the, the committee?
Eventually it will, um, the language will be, uh, the, this language could change to legislature, could change this. And so, um, by 2025, we'll have to have that committee and this will be in, the language will be required.
Is part of your concern that it's a very specific application to a general policy?
Yes.
Cause I share, yeah, it almost should be a standalone policy. The, that, yeah.
Yeah.
I share in that thought.
It says we're to appoint committees.
Right.
And then it says, but you got to do this.
Right. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. That'd be good. I think to maybe work with the legislature on it. It would be nice for it to be a standard in policy. So, yeah. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Uh, board policy CB superintendent of a motion?
I move to adopt changes to policy CB superintendent as presented.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Rebecca. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy passes. C B C Superintendent's Contract. Motion?
I move to adopt changes to Policy C B C Superintendent Contract as presented.
Sarah?
I'll second.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by Rebecca. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh. I I I like like it. I like the first red language, but I'm I'm the second language down there that bothers me. The employment contract, if it includes a mutually agreed to termination without cause. Must include a twelve-month notice of termination. What is that saying? Is that saying? You can terminate somebody, but you have to give them a twelve-month notice or what?
That's exactly what it's saying and it's required by statute now.
It is.
Yes.
If it's without cause, if it's a without cause termination.
Without cause.
Yeah, and so that's what uh came up in the last couple of years with uh superintendents being terminated. Um, had a board meeting and didn't have that clause in their contract um that did had no violation or but was without cause.
Let me add, it just has no reflection on our current superintendent. I'm looking ahead to the future. But.
We do have evaluation coming up, but I appreciate that. Yeah.
And and it so also applies to interim superintendents. So you hire somebody on an interim basis.
Doesn't, I didn't see that part.
Uh, if you look at on page one, the first footnote.
Includes an interim superintendent, yeah, by statute.
It does, yes.
Sure.
And it's required by statute.
And it's without cause. So just if you decide.
Can I make some comments real quick?
Please.
Um, so being on pace, um, we have talked about this. And so, yes, that's exactly, but there is ways. That you can still, you may have to pay your superintendent for a time, not necessarily the whole year. But there is some agreements that um the attorneys could help with um mutual agreements so that. They would leave and you could pay them a certain amount of money. So it's not just like cut and stone. What happens is. You call Pace right away and then they help you figure out a um. A nice way to to make sure that everyone is following the the law. So not necessarily would you, there's. Loopholes per se um and Pace, Pace has a big breakdown of it. They probably will have it at one of their workshops.
How do you feel about it, Dawn? Are you gonna vote yes or no?
Um, yeah, because it's the law.
Okay.
This is one of those great examples where we have a lot of control there.
I wish I could do a big speech about it, but I can't. It's the law, though.
Okay.
Some legislator was watching the E S D vote is now gonna pass the law. Forcing you to vote yes on the local service plan.
Rick, what's your specific concern? What? I I guess I don't understand. Can you can you share what your specific concern?
Say we hire after Grant leaves twenty years from now. That his replacement turns out to be a Doug. And we want to get rid of him.
For um, superintendents and for all new employees, isn't there a three-year um. Probationary period for all new employees, including admins, which would the superintendent fall under?
Apparently not, because it says for interim superintendents.
No, I mean, so you're talking prior to the end of a contract. Go ahead, Brent. Help me.
So essentially, I mean, uh, superintendents and assistant superintendents are at-will and employees. And so they could be terminated for cause, without cause. But this this is uh specifically speaking to a without cause termination. And so. If you have a contract, say you do have a three-year contract with the superintendent and that's not working out three months into it. You could make a twelve-month notice without cause that we want to terminate that contract. And like Dawn said. Pace, you could work out a financial deal or whatever it might be. That doesn't mean that superintendent is gonna be around for twelve more months if it's not mutually. And this, so. Because I don't think anybody wants to be around if the board does not want them to be leading their district. But um. There's opportunities to kind of have some payouts. I think this was mainly to protect. Um, you know, livelihood of superintendents and superintendents, we have replaced nearly. Seventy percent of them in the state over the last three years. Um, and so. It is, it's a challenge and to just have some protection so they have some sort of security for twelve months. Um, rather than just a month-to-month contract, which a lot of superintendents had month-to-month contracts. And I'm not sure they realize that.
Also, it's like a protection for um election season because sometimes some boards could be. A new majority and then they could get on and then fire the superintendent their very first meeting. Um, for just because they have the power now. And so um you would have a really hard time. Finding superintendents, especially close to election season. Um, and so I think this was a kind of a protection. But like I said. Haley at Pace and O S B A has, I wish I could tell you all the stuff that she has talked about, but it. She basically said, first thing you do is call us and we'll help you. And there is different options and it's not like. Set in stone as you would think.
Okay.
And I trust Haley, so.
Thank you. Did I answer your question, though?
Great. Good discussion. Anymore? Hearing none. We do have a motion and a second on this, right? Okay, good. Lost track. Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Sure.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote sure. Motion passes. Okay, uh. Policy E H. Records and data management. Have a motion?
I move to the adoption of changes on Policy E H Records and Data Management as presented.
Thank you, Polly.
I second that.
Nancy seconds. Thank you. Any discussion?
What language is being included in this policy? The blue and the green and the red?
Staff recommends blue.
Yeah, staff, and that's our current practice right now. And then the red statutory and the green is um, we don't recommend.
Okay, you don't recommend the green then?
No.
Is that part of our motion?
Yes. Yeah, as presented.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, though. Discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. And lastly. Is he still with us on Zoom? Our very patient Budget Committee Appointee nominee person. We have Hector Flores. And uh Hector, I'd just like to thank you first for applying for this. I know you've uh been a big part of the community and. Uh, are active and in the community and paying attention to what's going on with our school district. I don't know if you're with us and if you'd like to say anything.
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, uh, thank you for having me. Um, I'm here to uh apply to your Budget Committee for the fiscal year. Um, I'm really excited to be here and I'm here to answer any questions. I do apologize. Uh, this iPad does not support video. But if you want to know what I look like, I look like a younger Bruce Willis mixed with a little bit of Harry Potter.
That was really funny, Hector. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't hear anyone laughing, so I thought that.
Oh, yeah.
We all laughed.
Okay.
Yes, Nancy had a special comment she'll share later.
Okay.
All right.
Hector, I just have one question and that is um, I was really glad to see you apply um. Uh, for this uh position and um. I know that the role that you serve in at the City of Talent is pretty um. Inclusive and um may have some time, um lots of time spent and invested. So. My only concern is while our budget process is really typically only one meeting, potentially two. Sometimes the timing of receiving the budget and then looking at it to come to that first meeting is um, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, just. Looking at the time commitment with um your other responsibilities.
That's a great question. Um, and thank you for bringing it up. It is also a concern of mine, but um. You know, I I pride myself on being as um organized and um. Pri- prioritizing my workflow and with my other additions in my life. So I I hope that um. It does fit in my schedule. I have my planner with me, in fact, so uh we know some of the future dates. I can jot them down. And work around my uh schedule at work. Um, I have run bit the bit the Budget Committee for the City of Talent for the last two years. And um. Recently, we hired a new city reporter, so I won't uh be as involved in that process this year. So it does free me up just a little more.
Terrific. Thank you.
A motion?
I move to appoint Hector Flores to the Budget Committee vacancy.
Second that.
Moved by Rebecca, seconded by who?
Nancy.
Nancy, thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Hector, I'm really excited to uh have you uh join us in this capacity and uh I feel very fortunate to have you a part of our. Budget Committee. So with that, I'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick? Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Hector, thank you. Congratulations, I think.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will take a ten-minute recess and be back at seven fifty-seven. Thank you. And we will take a ten minute recess and be back at seven fifty seven. Thank you. Okay. Information and discussion. Oh, thank you. Oh, now it's finally playing. I was trying to play the Jeopardy theme song to get everybody back. Okay, we're back. Uh, facilities bond update.
Uh, yeah, just real quick, um, the playground at the high school, they broke ground last week or earlier this week. Um, so getting that prepped for um the equipment coming in for the summer. And then we are looking at actually finishing out uh Phoenix Elementary completely and re-roofing the library, the gym and the cafeteria. Uh, which would complete that. Those are, but all of those roofs are past their life. And we're looking at using semester funding that qualify uh that um those projects qualify for uh to really finish out that whole campus, so. We'll be bringing some recommendations to you next time for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, financial update?
Uh, just a quick financial update that um there could be a possibility to have um. Um, kind of um a budget resolution to really make sure that we have are covered uh for the rest of the year. Um. Yasmin's working on that and we look to see about making a recommendation in April for that, so just so you're aware of it, but um. Uh, just to have the supplemental budgets who were covered for the rest of the year, which is fairly common and. We'd make a budget in May and there's a lot of unpredictability between that and executing it.
It's honestly shocking. There's not more of that than needs to happen. I can't even budget my small business that well, so good job. Uh, okay, any questions on financial? I'm like, man, I need a Yasmin in my life. Okay, legislative OSBA update, probably nothing to share there, so we'll move on. Just kidding.
You say that, you guys laugh because you know that's not really quick. Um, oh my goodness, this week. I can't even keep the meetings straight because I've been to so so many. Um, Sarah and I, well, Friday, we were at the LPC meeting and then Wednesday, we had joined. A meeting with uh OSBA LPC about the special education bills because there were so many questions about them during our. Friday recap meeting that um Richard said, you know what, maybe we should have just a special education bill. So there was a big talk on Wednesday about um the half day bill that is coming up. Um. Basically, a lot of families, some schools kind of took the purpose of the half day the wrong way. So some districts have been um utilizing that in a great way that's productive to families and some have not. And so they're they're talking about changing the bill and moving it. Through really, really fast so that schools could implement the changes after spring break, which is concerning when. For me, it's concerning when anything moves really that fast because is there enough input um feedback and thoughtfulness of it? Um, my concern was like if there's some schools are doing it great, then why don't we have that be the model? And um come up with another option and see before just trying to push something in very quickly, but I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that.
Can you, can you say what they were used, what was not a productive use of that? I'm not sure I I understand. It's maybe like the top reason or something, I don't know.
Do you see, you want to help me out? Uh, yeah, there's some, there, there's some really sad um stories of. Um, kids not getting what their IDA rights are and faith rights and um. Basically, I mean, I don't know how to say it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but basically using it as an excuse not to give services that should have been given. Am I correct on that? And um. Which they are already violating lots, lots of laws anyways, so to change this one, I feel like. You, we need something else and just to change the laws, like they need to have some kind of. Support to do it right, but also there needs to be like, hey, you've got to do this right instead of just changing the bill for the few schools. Um, but yeah, there was a lot of um. There's some lawsuits coming through and a lot of um time uh. Loss, I mean, a lot of kids lost time, but this this group of kids that had um this unfortunate. At some districts, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of time and um it just wasn't in the, and also their their um. Like therapies and their and speech and the other supports they get, so not only was it learning time, but it was also um. Other supports that are really needed to to um. Just develop and and uh and succeed. Am I, am I on track?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you're you're right, Don. I mean, unfortunately, the pandemic in impacted employment and it's really hard to find special education. Providers like speech pathologists, school psychologists and teachers and aides. And so a lot of schools and school districts had to reduce student days because without that support, the students had behaviors that could be physically. Unsafe for others. Um, so while I agree that students have a right to a full day education, what I don't like about the bill. Is that um the spirit of IDEA, which is our Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, is that everything's a team decision. And not one person gets to make a decision about um. As a student's placement or their services, so not the principal, not the special ed teacher, not, not the parent. But this law for a state law overrides that and allows the parent to unilaterally make a decision. And while we know the parents know their kids best, sometimes like it just takes away the spirit of the team and, you know. Professional guidance is often needed, so I don't love this bill for that reason. Although I don't think it's going to impact us and our district. We only have one student that is on an abbreviated day. Um, at this time, the hard part will be finding staffing. It's a student who's in steps plus and they do not offer a full day with the ESD. Will be finding staffing before spring break is over, so that's good. It's tough. It's tough timing for school districts.
Any other legislative updates?
Um, just a reminder that um Don and I are taking some time each uh weekend to send out an update of what's happening. In um the legislature kind of bills that are coming up for um House and Senate uh Education. Committee, so opportunities to just be engaged at at the legislative level and start to see. Um, how those decisions are impacting the policies that we're voting on um at these meetings and why we're having to do these statutory. Changes and updates when it seems like we just read through. Didn't we just read through the entire book? And so um, so just kind of paying attention at the maybe root level of um of what's happening, so keep her out for that. Um, this week, the twenty first, right, is Jeff Golden's um town hall, so if anybody's interested in participating. Um, in that and connecting with him, there's an opportunity to do that this next week and that's what I got.
Thank you so much and thank you both for um being so active in uh the legislative session and for keeping us updated. Next is uh Almeida Fire Update. I'm gonna make a suggestion. How about we call this item the Community Recovery Update? Would that be an acceptable change to the title, this section? Okay, great. So be it. It's done. Okay, um, any updates on community recovery?
I I don't have any, but I was curious. I'm noticing that on the corner of ninety nine and. I don't really know what that is. It turns where the roundabout is where we have families. I'm assuming we still have families, except that value. Um, the Gateway Project. Um, what, what is uh like, what is that that look like in the next? Six months or, I don't know. Oh, someone knows, maybe. I'm just curious about that. I just see a lot of families there and are we still? I'm cer- I'm certain we are still supporting them, um but I'm just curious about what's happening.
Yeah, and the the goal is to um make sure they move from that transitional housing to permanent housing as they become available. I think my only comment, that's a really good question, and I think my only comment, it may be. To have a long-term recovery group come and give a a presentation and we, if we submit some pre-questions for them, they can come and um. Kind of share that, not necessarily the whole, because they encompass a ton. Um, but if we have some specific questions for them, then they can come and share some of those answers. Uh, for example, some anticipated number of units coming in that are um, you know, really targeting our our fire impacted families. Um, and maybe some other types of questions that we have, so I, if. You would like, I could see maybe April or May, we could do a progress uh program report with the Long Term Recovery Group.
I would love that. Also to. Find out, they've been having listening sessions and finding out what they're, what they're um, I guess, finding out in those in those sessions that are happening.
Um, can I add something? Um, when I talked to the city manager when I was asking questions about Tura, that kind of came up about um. Because I had heard some citizens concerned that that went up super fast and and um, so I started asking questions about it. And it was run by Rogue Retreat, but as of March first, it will be run by Access. And there was some, the uh manager didn't get into details, but there was some challenges and some bumps in the road. So they feel like things are gonna run smoother with Access and um they're still looking to, as far as she said. To um find permanent housing for those families, but they were also looking to improve those sites. Um, some of the questions I asked were um, you know, there's bark and wood and stuff around and is that traumatic for families that um? Um, ha- you know, had their houses destroyed because there's a lot of um flammable things around and she said that was one thing that they were going to be working on. So um. So I think there's going to be some changes there, but I think it's because um they are listening to feedback from. Um, families and community members and wanting to make that space better. Be in access, I think, will help. That's the understanding with the city manager last week or so.
Great. Anything else? Okay, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four academic calendar draft.
Yeah, this is um the draft for um next year as proposed and just some of the highlights. Um, Denise updated it for new staff, new classified staff and licensed staff um to. Uh, add an extra day for new employee orientation um to to include two full days. I think uh first of all, this was the first year we've included classified staff. Um, in our, in our uh full day orientation, which is great. They really appreciated it. And then um in talking with Jessica and uh Yasmin and looking at semester funds to really have our um new staff. You know, understand how we work and some of our processes and professionally develop and train a little bit more. We thought two days would be great, so we're excited to offer that. It does extend our in-service week ag- uh again, similar to last time, to really provide that upfront PD and training. Um, so it's two days rather than three days and those are, those are replacing the in-service days we had later in the spring. Um, it's a post-labor day start, which is traditional for us, includes the um. Spring break plus couple days. Um, and everything else is pretty much the same. We did increase uh student contact days by two days in this this calendar, which increases our instructional hours, which is, I know. Uh, something we're looking at, um continuing to look at, um to provide, you know, some. uh, something we're looking at, um, continuing to look at um, to provide, you know, support for our kids.
It's great.
Brent, I just had one question, which is um, conferences typically are those first few days before spring break in March, maybe they weren't this year, so I don't see a conference day in the spring.
We, we don't have a conference day in the spring. Actually, we haven't done those spring conferences, the spring break in, in a several, several years. We did last year have a one-day um, parent-teacher conference, um, I think it was in April. Um, and, and we, we got some feedback that it was, wasn't really worth having one day and it was really a targeted group and we feel like we can connect with families in a, in a different way and, and maintain the integrity of uh, ensuring that we have our instructional hours covered in those. Uh, we weren't seeing necessarily the impact of the spring conferences. Our staff a- asked about them all the time. Um, I think we, when we uh, have a team next year reviewing our calendar, I think we can look at seeing if, if that's something we want to be intentional about. Um, as you know, we are, uh, our state has some of the fewest instructional hours um, in the nation and our district actually is very low on instructional hours compared, compared to our region and our state. So that's what we're trying to maximize.
Can I have the cookie and the milk? Can I have the instructional hours and the conference days?
Then that's something we can look at about extending our year.
Or day, right, isn't there, isn't it all about minutes, right? I mean, as far as so, as far as start or end times or?
Yeah, and typically our, our um, well, I think that's something that our state could look at about instruct, and increasing that. But typically, we have the challenge of uh, our secondary schools meeting the instructional minutes. Our elementaries are usually pretty good, so.
So I'm, I'm just go, gonna go on the record and say, while I appreciate the two extra days, I would still like to see more and I hope that's something that we can explore. As like, I know that those kind of big changes require a lot more discussion um, and community input and, and take into account collective bargaining at times and things like that, but I, I think uh, with where our students are at and I know we're making good progress, um, I would still like to see us pursue even more instructional days. Um, and so I hope that's a discussion that we can continue um, starting now and into the future.
Yeah, a- and it's a good point. Currently, our collective bargaining has up to 177 student contact days. Um, this calendar reflects 169. Um, so we have some room, but uh, with the uh, professional development opportunities, um, that's where we'd have to come from, probably that. You know, in-service week, which it, which it certainly can. Um, we feel like as we head into our, our new strategic plan and integrated guidance, this year will be important to make sure we do some PD upfront. Um, but that's something that we could look at um, next year. I think some people only have a four-day in-service. Um, some districts only have four days of in-service days, so um, that's where they get some of their instructional hours back.
Is it possible, possible on that first week of um, to have it be five days instead of four, to do two full weeks with that Friday? Um, the 25th, I mean, I get everyone's trying to maybe squeeze the last sweetness out of summer. But if you were looking at potentially doing your two days with new hires and then you could still have your three days with um, with everyone for your professional development.
We, we can do whatever we want, but that would take an instructional day out of the calendar because we have 190-day contracts.
What, I apologize. I thought you said we had a little room.
For for instruct, student contact days. So we can only do a calendar 190 days by contract. And so the whole calendar is 190.
Right.
And right now, 169 of those are instructional days.
So I guess I was thinking maybe taking the April date and putting it there. Does that not, like a shifting of one of the other green days to that day? Am I misunderstanding?
We can shift a green day some other place. Is that what you wanted?
That's what I was thinking. Then you'd still have your, at the, at the front and you could increase an instructional day. But I don't know how.
Yeah, maybe this is a conversation to get into details.
We're increasing hours. Um, I did wonder last year and this year when we were having the increased time, why it was four and then five versus five and five that first two weeks right before school, but that's just a question to maybe think about.
And it looks like, um, I know I heard some feedback from people who may or may not live in my household about the grading day being on a Monday. It looks like it's on a Friday this calendar.
Yeah, we moved him back to uh, Fridays, um, especially in November, because if we had that on a Monday, that would be a three-day week before um, Veterans Day, uh, three-day student week, which didn't really make sense. And then to balance out the quarters, uh, made sense to do it on a Friday, um, the next, the, at this semester. Um, and to continuing with the bal- balancing out the quarter, it made sense to do it on a Monday for the, for the end of the third quarter, so mainly Fridays, but one Monday in service.
And since we're suggesting changes, um, that April in-service is Carolina's birthday and she, she'd like to have students on her birthday, if you could, no, just kidding, I'm just messing with you. I'm just kidding, okay. Okay, go ahead, Don.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for putting the additional um, PD days at the beginning of the year um, at pace. Uh, there's been some issues at some school districts with a staff not being um, trained enough and um, especially in equity issues. And so I really appreciate um, us spending time and making sure our staffs are up to date, especially I'm a I'm cautious, I was gonna say afraid, that there's going to be many changes during this legislative session and we're going to have to make sure staff um, understands um, what is going on, because I don't think they watch legislation like Sarah and I do. And so I appreciate that. I know that it takes some days off from instruction, but it really um, I think helps the students learning and it protects us um, for um, issues that may arise, so thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna do the uh, policies a little bit different and I'm just gonna invite, if you have a question or a comment on any of these four po- uh, policies that will be up for consideration next week. Yeah, go ahead, Rick. Meeting, not next week. We are not meeting next week.
I'm okay with the first one CPA. I like that it's CPA.
You would.
But the CPA AR. Uh, this is where I, I'm confused and I should know it, but when do we approve an AR and when don't we approve an AR?
This would fall under the not taking action category, this one.
Oh, and my second question deals with uh, that CPA AR and also with in conjunction with that, the next one, GCPA. And it's the references, uh, the ORS's. On the uh, CPA AR for the cultural and language expertise criteria, it's ORS 339.934. And on the next one, the GCPA, uh, it also addresses that same thing. Uh, but it's, it's got ORS. It was a 342, uh, 805 and 342, 934, uh, is, is anybody an expert here on ORS or why are they separate? Why are they not the same ORS's?
I think it's because one has to do with administrators and one has to do with licensed staff.
Is that right?
I think that's what it is, so I have that right. We can get some clarity on that too, Rick. It's a good question. But I think that's why, because these, these have to do with administrators, then there's the AR and then there's licensed staff and then there's an AR for that, and I think that's, that's why these are different.
Yeah, that probably makes sense.
Yeah.
And, and another question, uh, but GCPA AR. Of course, it's got the green language, which I guess means it's not recommended directly, so we don't have to really deal with it, although it is a question on, on to Nancy, if I may, address this. Uh, it's on sec, page two of the, the green. Item six. They reference Latino or Hispanic. What is the difference?
Do you want the short answer or the long answer?
Well, we'll start with the short one.
Dang it, you're cutting my wing. Um, Latino or Hispanic, wait. You're, you're wanting to know the difference?
Yeah, well, what's the difference?
It's a preference of utilization of language. It, it's essentially meant the same. It means the same, but different people um, feel a strong leaning towards either one or the other. That's the really short answer. The longer answer is that if it's Hispanic, it's um, folks that are from Spanish speaking countries. Sorry, Latino is from Spanish-speaking countries, whereas Hispanic is people that speak Spanish from countries that speak Spanish or might not speak Spanish. For example, Portugal, they would be considered Hispanic, but not Latino because they don't speak Spanish, they speak Portuguese. So it becomes, but again, typically they're used interchangeably, but it really has, does have something to do with your coming from a Latin American country.
And, and I don't know, you know, my wife is of Mexican descent, so what is she, Latino or Hispanic? Probably Hispanic.
Um, she would be both. I mean, I guess more specifically Latino because she comes from a Spanish-speaking country. But again, that term gets used interchangeably.
Because you, you see it all the time.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people that really dislike the term Latino because, sorry, the term Hispanic because it was utilized as a categorization in 1960, something to really be a discriminatory term, even though it wasn't necessarily explicitly said as a um, discriminatory term. It has been coined and it has been utilized and it isn't seen that way, but for some people, the term Hispanic is really problematic. That's why I'm saying, do you want the long answer? Because it isn't like a clear-cut answer.
Thank you, thank you for adding to the confusion.
And then we can add, you know, now the term is the more, the, the highly utilized term is Latino AX, so it's Latino, Latina or X to include um, non-binary folks. But that's also a term that's problematic because it's utilized for um, oftentimes the people that utilize it more, it's younger generations and if you, if you were to use Lat- Latinx earlier in the presentation, I think, and Santi mentioned Latinx. It can be really offensive because it, it's not a term that we use or that we own. It, it is a term that has been given by academics and um, individuals that want to utilize more inclusive language, but it isn't necessarily adopted by a lot of Latino folks, so, and we're not monolithic, right? So for some people, that term is perfect and for other people, it's really confusing and it's not identifiable or um, something that we adhere to.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. I hope everyone is paying attention because we're gonna have a quiz on March 2nd.
I hope so.
Okay, good.
I may not pass that quiz, by the way, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments on these policies? Okay, great. Uh, the next uh, agenda for the next meeting is there for your review. So if you have any questions or concerns about that, please contact myself or Denise.
Didn't we, oh, we have a public.
We have what? We're good? Okay, we're adjourned.